All right. So I'd like to call the meeting to order and we'll stand for a moment of silence and a pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, and to the citizens of one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I'd like to welcome back Denise. She's been away for a few days and having a good time, well deserved. Great to see you here. Now if we could have the roll call.
Kevin Raymond?
Here.
Michael Cox?
Here.
Peter Hansel?
Here.
Roberta Seis?
Here.
Richard Tenello representing Chris Williams?
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray?
I'm here.
Okay, we have proof of publication.
Files were published in the Kansas State Times on March 15, 2019, and April 26, 2019, were by Dr. David Ameloff and Psychoski.
Okay. So I don't think we have any minutes to approve. So for those of you who plan to speak today, if you want to rise and raise your right hand and be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm this amendment you are about to give as a treat for help you got?
Yes.
All right, thank you. With the Planning Commission, we are appointed by the Board of County Commissioners and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. For those of you who have not been here on a regular basis and not familiar with our format, they are as follows. We have continuances and those are items where the staff traditionally or the applicant has requested a continuance for any number of reasons and it's generally been our stance to grant those continuances unless they're extenuating circumstances. And we have a list of consent items, we call the Consent Agenda, and we'll go through those items one at a time. If you hear something on Consent Agenda that you would like to have discussed today, as I read it off, you just raise your hand and we'll pull it off consent and we'll discuss it. Otherwise, anything that remains on consent will be voted on at one time and approved and then the others will be placed with the regular items. And those are items that are on the regular agenda and on the docket for discussion. Applicants will have three minutes to bring their presentations and objectors will have three minutes to state their concerns. And then following the presentation, the applicant will have time for rebuttal or to respond to those people that have concerns. We've had a couple of requests for extra time, which I've noted, one from St. Leo and one from one of the applicants, so those have been noted and granted. And just a reminder, please, if you have a phone on, please silence it. I'm going to take my own advice. And you too. So before we start the meeting, we open the meeting for public comment on any items not appearing on the agenda. Is there anybody here to speak on an item that's not on the agenda today? I see no one. So Denise, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development Department. We're going to start with your consent item and we have a couple of continuances. Item PC-1, which is PDD-19-7413, in the name of Carmel Friendship Baptist Church. This is for a change in zoning from MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to a C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District, rather. And this is, the applicant has requested a continuance to the July 11, 2019 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object or anyone here to hear this one? Okay, go ahead.
I also would like to direct your attention to item PC-6, which we did receive a request for continuance this morning. And item PC-6 is PDD-19-7410, and it's in the name of MHC Forest Lake Estates MH LLC. It's for a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district to an RMH mobile home district. And the applicant has requested a continuance to the Planning Commission meeting of July 11 at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objections?
And I would also like to bring your attention to item PC-12, which is also a continuance. And that one's PDD-19-0893. It's for a transportation corridor variance request and it's for Carefree Shadowwood LLC. And the applicant has requested a continuance to the June 6, 2019 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Okay, is the applicant here? Anyone here to object? No objections? So we have a continuance request for PC-1, PC-6, and PC-12?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to grant the continuance. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I will continue on through the rest of the consent agenda at this moment. Item PC-2 is PDD-19-7412. It's in the name of David Lorilla and Donna Mormon Lorilla. It's for a home occupation for massage therapy in an R1MH Single Family Mobile Home District. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your packet.
Okay, is the applicant present? Okay, anyone here to object? Okay.
Item PC-3 is PDD-19-7414. It's a special exception in the name of Kenneth J. and Bettina S. Supernault. It's for two duplexes in an R4 High Density Residential District. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your packet.
The PC-3, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? I don't see any objections.
Move on to item PC-4, which is PDD-19-7408, in the names of Russell and Leanne Finley. It's for a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district to an AR5 agricultural residential district, and this comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Is there applicant present? Okay, anyone here to object? No seen objections.
Item PC-5 is PDD-19-7409. It's in the names of Jeanette T. and Eugene C. Stone Jr. It's for a change in zoning from an AR agricultural residential district to an R1 Rural Density Residential District, and this comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Any applicant here? Anyone here to object? No objections?
Following item is item PC-7, PDD-19-7411, in the name of Lawrence P. Martinez. It's for a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district to an MF1 Multiple Family Medium Density District. The applicant has voluntarily agreed to record a deed restriction limiting the use to single family attached townhomes on this project, and this comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, is the applicant here? Anyone here to object? Does he like to have that pulled? Okay.
Item PC-
So PC-7?
PC-7.
Okay.
Item PC-8 is PDD-19-CU28, in the name of Newport Z LLC Premier Cigar Lounge. It's for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, on premises consumption in conjunction with the operation of a cigar lounge in a C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your packet.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay. You were the lady that wanted to speak, weren't you? Just teasing.
Item PC-9 is PDD-19-CU29, in the name of Amistad Insurance LLC Railroad Subs and Bakery. It's for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine only, on premises consumption in conjunction with the operation of a restaurant with outside sales and service on a patio in a C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your packet.
Okay, is applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objections?
Following item is PC-10, PDD-19-CU30, and it's in the name of ABB LLC AT&amp;T Mobility New Singular Wireless PCS, and this is for 154-foot above-ground level monopole wireless communications facility in a C2 General Commercial District. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your packet.
And the applicant's present? Anyone here to object? No objections?
Item PC-11 is a zoning amendment, and it is PDD-19-7394, in the name of Smith 54 MPUD, HV Smith and MV Smith co-trustees, and MM Dulcim Mascolo. And it's for a rezoning from an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to a Master Plan Unit Development District to reduce or decrease residential entitlements from 1,598 to 700 attached-detached multifamily and to add an additional 10 hotel rooms for a total of 30 on approximately 164.8 acres. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your packet.
Okay, and is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
Mr. Chairman.
It's a total of 1:30.
Yeah, 1:30, I heard.
I have a question for Denise.
Yes.
Denise, is there a reason why we don't have P-13 on consent, too? Because it's related to PC-11 and usually we hit a plan amendment first before the rezoning, so...
Yes, I'm glad you said that. That was my mistake. I should have asked to hear that after the comp plan amendment. But I can read the comp plan amendment into record or we may have an actual presentation for you on that item.
You want to delay this then?
Well, I just, I don't think either one of these are going to get denied, but really you should be hearing the zoning after the plan amendment. I would have preferred that just they both were on consent. I'm not sure whether they have one of them on consent, but I think you need to hear 13 before you hear 11.
Do you want me to just read it into record and call for public comment on the item?
Yeah.
For 13?
On P-13.
Unless staff feels like they need a presentation on it.
And just for point of clarification, I think Mike mentioned the number was 1:30 and not 30?
Hotel rooms.
Right.
I apologize.
Sorry.
Thank you so much. It is P-13.
Mr. Chairman, this is Nectarios Pitos with Planning and Management. Is the request to put P-13 on the consent agenda?
Well, either put it on the consent agenda so they can be approved at the same time or we're going to have to hear P-13 before you take action on P-11. I'm okay either way, but they really shouldn't be hearing the zoning before they approve the land use change. But to be clear, I'd be perfectly fine if P-13 just got moved to consent. I don't know why it's not on consent, but...
It's not an objection for staff to put P-13 on the consent agenda.
Okay.
So are we moved to put P-13 on the consent?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Okay. So P-13 is PDD-19-0871. PDD-19-0871, P-13, it's for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPA L-19, Prenz O6, Smith 54, large-scale comp plan amendment to the future land use maps 2-15 and Sheet 20, changing from RES 12, residential 12 units dwelling units per gross acre, to comp commercial OFF office and CON conservation lands to PD plan development on approximately 164.8 acres located on the south side of State Route 54, approximately 2,000 feet east of Meadowbrook Drive, and a text amendment to subarea policy, future flu 7.1.9, Smith 54 subarea, and a map amendment to the future land use map 2-9, Prenz 9, Smith 54 subarea. And this comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, so the applicant is present and there's no objection. I didn't see an objection. Okay.
And that's the end of your consent.
Proof of approval, the consent agenda?
Is that as amended because some things-
As amended, yeah.
Yes, as amended.
Yeah, I think PC-7 was pulled. That's the only one, right?
Well, PC-6 was pulled and...
12, 1, 6, and 12.
Well, PC-6, yeah, and yeah.
13 was added.
And 13 was added.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so you have a motion, you have a second. Further discussion of the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries. All right.
We're going to move on to item, which is now P-7.
Okay.
Okay. So item P-7 is a rezoning from AC to MF1 Multiple Family Medium Density District in the name of Lawrence P. Martinez, PDD-19-7411.
Don't get used to it.
The property is located in south-central Pasco County. It's on the west side of Hay Road, approximately 1,500 feet south of Wesley Chapel Boulevard. The request is to rezone the property from AC agricultural district to MF1 Multiple Family Medium Density District. And the parcel contains approximately 5.99 acres. So the applicant, sorry. The applicant proposes to rezone the property and has agreed to voluntarily deed restrict the property to have a total of 35, a maximum of 35 single-family attached townhomes in conformance with the MF1 Multiple Family Medium Density District standards for development. That means that this will not be an apartment complex. The surrounding area is characterized by Grand Oaks MPUD, which consists of attached single-family townhomes, and also undeveloped multifamily parcels that have been entitled for multifamily to the north. It also has single-family dwellings surrounding it and agricultural pursuits. There have been other similar rezonings to this, which include a rezoning in 1987 for the Grand Oaks MPUD to have single-family attached townhomes, and also a rezoning in 2006 from AC similar zoning to MF1 Multiple Family Medium Density District for an 18.55 acre parcel that's located to the north of this parcel. This is the surrounding zoning as I explained. So there's the multifamily to the north, MF1. It's entitled but not developed. Here's the Grand Oaks, which are attached, single-family attached homes. And these are parcels that have single-family residences and agricultural pursuits, these parcels here. The subject property of the future land use is RES 6, potential for six dwelling units per gross acre, and that's in conformance with what the applicant is requesting. And the access at this point in time is proposed through Hay Road. There is a finding that stated that potentially it could be proposed through Hay Road. There is a finding of fact that basically states that if there is functional access, not to include emergency access to Hay Road, then the applicant will be responsible for improving Hay Road to county standards. The reason why that finding is in there because there is a potential, a possibility, that this parcel may be developed in conjunction with the parcel to the north. And if it's developed in conjunction with the parcel to the north, the primary access will be through Wesley Chapel Boulevard. And staff recommendation is for approval.
Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 3465 something 2, I think, for the applicant. We'd like to just wait to rebut. We haven't, nobody's contacted us regarding rezoning request, so we'll just wait and hear and respond. Thank you.
Great, thank you Barbara. Okay, I think we had a couple of people raise their hands that were concerned about this, had questions. If you want to come forward and state your name and address and what your concern is?
Are you asking for those in opposition?
Those in opposition, yes sir.
I'll be there.
Pardon me?
I'll be there.
Yeah, that's fine, sure. We don't give numbers, so just choose ever next is fine.
Okay. Rick?
Yes, sir. Great.
I'm Reginald Misimer, 4738 Central Avenue, St. Petersburg, Florida. I'm a traffic engineer. I'm here today at the request of Cynthia and Perry Horner. The Horners own the property just to the east of Hay Road, and actually Hay Road is under their private ownership. There are some others who have an easement to use it. Right now, there's seven homes on Hay Road. One day, the Horners would like to develop their property with 200 units. About a year ago, a traffic signal went up at the interest of Grand Oaks Boulevard, which didn't line up with Hay Road. Now there's no way to provide a left turn lane to enter Hay Road from County Road 54, and northbound queuing traffic coming out of Hay Road often is blocked by traffic attempting by queuing at the traffic signal at 54. And Mr. Horner tells me that in the past year, there've been two accidents associated with people who actually live on Hay Road at that intersection, simply because Hay Road's so close to the traffic signal. Now, the county has plans to widen County Road 54 to six lanes, and the neighbor proposes as part of this rezoning, and as was mentioned earlier, to join this parcel that's subject of the hearing today with the parcel to the north and build a road out to County Road 54, which is much more suitable than trying to run all the traffic from his 35 new units in and out of Hay Road at that location. Right now, what we understand is what's been proposed, if the properties are developed together, there'd be a connection 440 feet to the southwest of Hay Road. Now when the Horners are able to develop their property, they're going to try to redevelop 200 townhomes, and the amount of traffic that would be generated by this 35-unit development on top of the 200 trips that they want to, I mean 200 units they want to build would just not work.
Which property are you talking about right now?
Okay, Mr. Horner, you see where it says Hay Road? Mr. Horner and his wife own the property to the right. And to the left is a property that will likely be developed, and I think this lady you mentioned earlier would likely be developed in conjunction with the property being-
But that's not the one under consideration now, is it? Aren't we talking about the property to the south of that?
I know, I know, but it would be developed.
Well, we don't know whether it's going to be developed or not. We're talking about, we can only deal with what the application's talking about.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that, but I would like to finish so that I could convey some information to the applicant, okay? And I'm almost done. So Jason, go to graphic number three. Graphic number three. So the problem, one of the problems with leaving Hay Road where it is, we anticipate people that are going southwest on County Road 54 would try and cheat the intersection and actually go the wrong way to get to Hay Road. A very unsafe maneuver, which is a good reason why you don't put intersections so close to traffic signals. Next slide, please. The other problem would be people trying to leave Hay Road. They want to go the opposite direction. Hay Road's so close to that intersection, they don't have enough room to make the U-turn. Next slide, please. And then the other problem is Hay Road is 120-degree connections opposed to a 90-degree connection. Right turning traffic from County Road 54 has to slow down much more so than they would if they were just making the right turn. So we're here today to let the applicant know that we have a solution we want considered. Next slide, please. What we would like to see is that the ultimate development, when it's all put together and built, it'd be built across a frontage road system that would actually tie into the traffic signal that is so close to Hay Road. Mr. Horner and his wife have agreed to donate the property for that if that could happen. And although this may not be exactly the right forum for this, I really appreciate you letting me make the presentation.
Sure, no problem. Thank you very much. Good information. Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
Paul Steele, Commissioners. Appreciate your time today. If we can put up that proposed zoning slide again. I'm a 22-year resident of, my property is the bottom right-hand section that almost intersects the pink right there. I've been a resident there for the last 22 years. I personally put Hay Road in, or redid Hay Road at an expense of about $20,000 about four or five years ago. And I'm raising a couple of young children there. Hay Road is a multifamily community with seven homes. There are several kids being raised in the neighborhood. Most of the residents are long-term residents. We moved into that neighborhood with a specific expressed purpose of having our solitude, our privacy, being able to lead our lives in a certain way, free of heavy traffic, free of potential crime, free of people coming onto our property constantly, being able to have our dogs run free, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This proposed development is going to have a serious negative impact on our lifestyle. If the road situation is not changed, it will have even additional impact on the safety of my family and people coming to visit us on Hay Road. As was mentioned earlier, there's been two very serious accidents that led to one resident actually selling the property and leaving the property. It's already a bad situation with a blind turn. When you turn right off of Hay Road today, traffic's coming 55, 60, 65 miles an hour. Very frequently, people are almost rear-ended, just making a normal right-hand turn because you can't see the traffic coming. That's the situation now. If this road is not amended, it's going to be even exaggerated, an exaggerated safety hazard to what we already have in existence. So I'm here in opposition to the entire development. The financial impact, loss of property value, for example, if the property is not, if the road is not changed, we'd be unable at future time to actually sell our property at market value due to the fact that it would be a restricted opportunity for any developer due to the situation with the road if it goes in as proposed. My biggest concern is stopping it in general. We are, like I said, it's a seventh family community that is very unique. There's nothing like it within a 15-mile circumference of where we live. There's nothing that we could buy in the neighborhood that could replace it. And it's been there for better part of 50, 60 years. And I'm just one of the property owners there. Mr. Horner, I believe, has the same sentiments. And we see our lives being turned upside down by this whole development and a devaluation of our property. So I'm here in complete protest of the entire idea.
So, there's a square, those are square tens that you both own?
The, right there, yes sir, that's it.
660 by 660, is that what it is?
10 acres.
Yeah. So, what other road would you propose that they get out on?
Well, the, the plan that Mr. Horner's presented with the, with the traffic engineer here would accommodate future development if we were forced to, in fact, sell, to get out, find somewhere more private to live, as opposed to being surrounded by large, single-family homes that can see our property that are constantly, you know, now they're up above us looking down on top of us, you know. We, you know, we moved there 22 years ago to avoid that.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what your concern is, what I, what I'm, I gotta, can be concerned, and we gotta be concerned about everybody's property rights, there's a person that owns property.
Sure.
What I'm asking you is, what is his alternative to get to a road?
The alternative would be to take the traffic plan and have the road actually come to the existing light with Mr. Horner's property donated, and then the entrance up front on Hay Road. That would keep, that would keep us in a position of maintaining our property values, because I understand it, if it did go in as presently proposed, that would eliminate our ability to sell our property at fair market value, because it would not, it'd be very, very much less desirable for development. Plus, you're taking single-family residences, and now you're surrounding it with multifamily. I'm sure there's a devaluation of real estate involved with that.
Um, do you, I, well, first of all, I haven't seen a plan, and I'm sure the other people up here would like to see what, what the road plan is, and I know the applicant wants to respond, or maybe they have their own questions of their own, but every, every property owner, including you and, and the applicant, have a right to use whatever access they can use to get to, to and from their property.
I, I don't dispute that. What I do, what I do have a problem with is the fact that the road's already unsafe. There's been multiple accidents there. The present plan, as proposed, will make the road even less safe than it already is. And this gentleman's here as a traffic engineer to, to present that concern as it applies to Hay Road. And we suggest an amendment with Mr. Horner actually donating the property and changing the location of the exit and entry to Hay Road to accommodate a safer traffic situation for all residents, including any new family, multifamilies that come in there.
Is there anybody up here that has a question about it? Otherwise, I'd like to hear Mr. Horner's proposal.
Chairman, can he state his address, please?
My, 4100 Hay Road, and it's actually at Lutes, Florida.
Okay.
Appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the gentleman who spoke before was representing Mr. Horner.
I think he was, but I think in my mind, what he was talking about wasn't very clear. Maybe they have a map?
It's, it's this right here. It's, it's shown on your screen.
Oh, okay.
They're proposing to reorient the entrance, basically move the entrance, instead of coming out on Hay Road, you've moved the entire entrance over to the signalized intersection.
I don't see the down, I don't see the part, the property that we're talking about's not even in this picture, though.
This is their access off of County Road 54. This is Hay Road right here.
Yeah, so here's Horner's property, so that's what's coming in this way.
They're proposing, instead of they're coming in off of Hay Road, they come in.
They have an access road.
They have, they reorient the entrance so that it lines up with the signal, signalized location.
Okay, so they would.
But that requires Mr. Horner to donate the property. What's under review does not have, does not own that property where that road would go, so Mr. Horner would have to donate their property for that to occur.
Okay. Mr. Horner, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir. Perry Horner, 4340 Hay Road, Lutes. We own, where it says Horner Property, we own 24 acres, my wife and I. We've been, we've been there about 22 years. We own the, we have a 42-foot easement. We actually own the road, it's a private road. So, I'm not aware of a, not aware of a mechanism without me donating right-of-way where this property could access 35 units across our land.
So, are you saying Hay Road is a private road, it's not a public access?
Correct, yes sir.
Okay.
There's, there are seven homes, the people, the people south of me have ingress, egress easements. And the 42-foot easement was set up that way because it was, it didn't allow for subdivision without right-of-way donation, and that was the way that we could control this very thing. So, my understanding, I've, nobody's said anything to me about this, this access being on Hay Road. It's not been mentioned to me. I was under the impression it was going to be going out onto 54 through, through the development to the north, the townhome development, and this is in addition to that. And, but clearly, Mr. Misimer could speak to the alternative better than I can, but, but yes, I've, I've met with Mr. Misimer, and this is what we've come up with, we could essentially donate that land to get everybody that we're talking about here. The property that's under question today, the proposed development to the north, and the seven parcels that are on Hay Road, which is approximately 50 acres, could all get out to a traffic signal. So, that's essentially what we're, what we're trying to get to.
They improve, is that?
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
So, can I ask a question? The property to the north of the subjected property that's being considered, you're showing a road going across that piece of property. Who owns that property?
That's, that's owned, it's a, I don't know who owns it. It's under, it's under proposed development. Now, there's been a pre-application meeting. I believe it's Meridian Development. That's the proposed townhome community, and I believe the parcel that we're here to talk about today will be added to that.
So, you're proposing a road across these, another entity's property. Have they agreed to that?
No, we, we've, I believe we've reached out to them. This is, this is simply a proposal to try to rectify what is going to be a major issue.
Okay.
And to the extent that there, that the property we're talking about today is going to be tied to that property, that's, that's the nexus to present that, that option.
Okay. Anything?
What, what does the private, you say it's a private road, I'm sure there's some kind of shared agreement. What does the private road agreement say? I mean, does it give the individual, property owner, right and prohibit him from selling?
Doesn't prevent them from selling it, I believe it speaks to subdivision.
So, are you saying that the property that we're being reviewed today, that's owned by Lawrence Martinez, I believe, does not have the right to use Hay Road?
They do. I don't, I don't believe they have the right to subdivide it and put all that tra, I mean, it's a, I mean, it's a private road. It's, we, we own the road, we maintain the road, we do everything for it. You can't, you can't subdivide it and put 35 new people using the road.
Do you have a copy of your easement agreement with them that says that?
I don't have it with me. I, again, I don't think it's an easement issue, I think it's a subdivision issue. I think it's part of the, I believe it's part of the LDC, as far as I understand.
Well, the LDC doesn't prohibit, what, the staff report says they'd have to approve Hay Road to county standards, they'd have to basically.
So, they'd have to, yeah, so they'd have to take it from me, is what I'm saying. I mean, they can't.
But I'm asking, do you, are you saying they don't have the right to pave the road?
They don't, it, a 40, my understanding is a 42-foot right-of-way is not sufficient to, to accommodate that level of subdivision. That's my understanding. And it used to be, it used to be a minimum 50 feet. I think it may be more now.
I guess it's a question for staff, do, do we know what the minimum width to pave that road to county standards?
Everybody keeps turning and looking back that way.
Or maybe the applicant knows, I don't.
Okay. Everybody else can have a seat. Barbara?
Hi, Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie. I am trying to figure out why we're trying to solve a road issue at a zoning level. We don't know if we're going to access Hay Road. We have a finding of fact, if we do access Hay Road, that we have to deal with substandard road. We have to deal with access management. If, we're now trying to solve an if. We're trying to leapfrog, frog up to an alignment of an intersection. The rezoning request is compatible, and you've, you've heard the neighbors saying, "We object, but me too." You've got an EC to the west, you've got IL, Res 6, MF1. Somebody wants to do, to come here and say they're going to do rezoning for 200. I don't think you need to solve any road issues. Steve Henry is here and can talk to you about road issues, but I don't think we need to solve easements and subdivisions and lineage easements and all those things.
Barbara, I'm not sure I agree with you completely, because one of the zoning criteria is, is there adequate access to the site? I think the question is, there is a condition, basically not a condition, but a statement that you'd have to break, approve it to county standards. The question is, is there enough right-of-way there that you, that you have the right to use, that it could be improved to county standards? I'm just trying to see, is the statement in the finding implementable? That's the question.
Okay.
Is this gentleman asserting that you don't have the right to improve it to county standards? And it's, it's a question. He's saying there's not enough right-of-way to do it, or I'm not sure if he's alleging you don't have the legal right to do it, or there's insufficient right-of-way to do it.
That's not the only access, because there's access to the north through the northern parcel. That's the proposed access, though.
Well, the findings in the gen memo don't say that. They just say that the access is to Hay Road. They don't, I don't, do you have legal right to another connection?
The property will be developed together, and the access will be to Wesley Chapel Boulevard. Steve can go through and explain that much better than I can, but.
Well, then we need to add to the memo that that's, that's where your access is, that because, right now, the memo just says your access is to Hay Road, and this gentleman's saying you can't improve Hay Road to county standards.
Hi, applicant Tony Tanico, Eastern Meridian Property Group, 36181 East Lake Road, Palm Harbor, Florida, 34685. To answer your question, sir, we, we do have legal access to that property all, and we actually, in fact, have a property owner also lives on Hay Road, the other 10 acres. She can probably verify this, but obviously, all these residents that live on Hay Road have legal access to their property. It is through this easement agreement that was mentioned today.
That isn't my question, sir.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify that.
Even that gentleman's conceding you have legal access. That's, his question is, is there enough, my, it's a technical question, maybe Mr. Henry can answer it. Is there enough right-of-way on Hay Road that if it needs to be improved to county standards, that can happen?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll let somebody else answer that. Let me add one more thing, if you don't mind. So, we do have the property, this property under contract, the Martinez parcel, that's five acres. We also have 18 acres under contract to the north of him, owned by Ms. Woodrow and Mr. Dupont. And our project access, we've been, we have an access management analysis. Steve Henry, our traffic engineer, we've had a couple of meetings with the county at this point, and our access is not proposed from Hay Road. In fact, we're coming from Wesley Chapel Boulevard. So, with that said, I'll let somebody answer the question.
The point, the point we're trying to make is that we're dealing with the property that was applied for. We're not dealing with another piece of property.
Yes, sir.
That you're, you're talking about. You're not, you're not listening to us.
Yes, I am. I, I hear you. I just wanted to make that note.
So, that's the dilemma, is the property before us, according to the gen memo, says it's accessing Hay Road.
Well, it doesn't actually say that. It says if it does.
Actually, that's not, it says, look at finding number two, access to the property is from Hay Road. So, it says that, Barbara.
Okay. Why won't it be aggressive here? My goodness.
Because that's not a, tell me something that's not correct.
Okay, all right, you don't have to be aggressive about it. I'm sorry, I, I know there's a finding of fact that says if about the stand, substandard road, so.
There's a finding in number two that says access to the property from Hay Road.
It's all worked together here. Understood.
That's why we're, that's why we're trying to solve the access problem.
Well, that's why it's problematic that we're now talking about some other access point, when, maybe we could just bring Mr. Henry up here.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Thank you.
Steve, name is Steve Henry, Linkson Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa, 33607. To answer your question, you know, we could meet the substandard road criteria for widening the road. It would be 10-foot lanes, it's 42 feet wide. We have to put 10-foot lanes in there, whether we curve and gutter it, put rural section in there, that would be determined, but the, the substandard road criteria is 10-foot lanes. We put 20 feet in 42 feet. So, there's sufficient room to be able to put a 20-foot road along, in Hay Road, if we had to. But I think, as it indicated, that's not the intent. Here, we've actually met with staff on numerous occasions to work out the access that will be there with a joint development for the parcel to the north, and we meet all the spacing criteria in your code for that access. So, that's really the intent, but if, worst case, if we had to, we could provide a 20-foot road along Hay Road.
Okay, well, thank you for finally answering my question.
All right, thank you, sure.
But, I mean, just ask your follow-up question.
And that would be sufficient for the amount of traffic?
That, that meets the substandard road criteria in the county code, yes.
Okay. And how would you make the access work? Because the other argument we're hearing is that the access off of Wesley Chapel Boulevard wouldn't work the way hay comes into Wesley Chapel Boulevard.
Well, you know, your, your, the county is widening Wesley Chapel Boulevard. They, they have looked at that, they're leaving it where it is and constructing the road based on where Hay Road is today, intersecting it. So, they've looked at it, and they believe that it will work where, where it is, or they wouldn't be leaving the road where it is. So, from that standpoint, i- if the county has looked at it, the county's widening the road, and the county's leaving it where it is, then, you know, that, there we go.
But, to play devil's advocate, that we may not have looked at it with these additional 35 units, though, so that, my question is, do you think it'll still work even with the additional 35 units?
I, you know, I think that it has, it potentially has some operational issues, but the reality is, you know, the county's looked at it, you know, is the design's up there good? Sure. But, but from our standpoint, what we're looking at is, if we have functional access to Hay Road, we have to bring it up to county standards. If we have to bring it up to county standards, part of that process is doing an access management analysis to look at the access to Wesley Chapel Boulevard. At that point in time, we would look at it. We haven't looked at it in the detail of that, because the idea is we're not going to have that functional access. But, we're fine with the condition saying, if we do have functional access to Hay Road, we have to look at that intersection. That's fine.
There's already a finding that says you have to do an access.
And, and we're perfectly okay with that.
Okay, let me answer my question.
All right, thank you.
Any, any other questions from up here? All right. Barbara, do you have anything else to add? Okay.
So, the only thing I would add is that, I mean, planning commissioners can do what they want, but if there's a resident who's interested in how the access would work, if they intend to use Hay Road, they can contact staff and be asked to be notified when the site plan approval comes in, because that's when staff would get the access management analysis and look at how it's going to work. And it may require something like what was proposed, but that won't be determined until site plan approval, if they request access to Hay Road at all.
Yeah, I mean, my feeling is, is if somebody is offering a solution that is going to make everybody happy, why wouldn't you want to look at it? And to me, this is a, something that might be a better, be a better solution, so.
Let me ask a question along that line. So, when they do get a little further down the road, and they're more in design, the county has the power at that point to consider what is being proposed here?
Yeah, because the county could say, access, for 35 units, access to Hay Road on existing Hay Road won't work, so applicant, you need to figure out a way to design this so it will work.
Okay, okay. I'll move for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve. We have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Mr. Nice?
Sorry, trying to get you to P14.
Take your time.
Almost there. There you go. And here's Viviana Martinez. Good afternoon, Viviana Martinez, Planning and Development Department. You'll now be acting as a local planning agency. I wanted to begin by stating into the record that there have been four ex parte's that have been submitted to the clerk. One for planning commission member Michael Cox, Jamie Girardi, Kevin Ryman, and Chuck Gray.
Thank you. So noted.
Item P14, PDD 190964, is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in the name of CPAL 1813 Grand Oaks. The project proposes to change the future land use from Res 1, residential, one dwelling unit per acre, to PD, planned development, future land use, on approximately 175 acres with associated suburbia policies. Subjected properties are located in east-central Pasco County, and they are at the southwest corner of State Road 52 and Prospect Road intersection. Some of the surrounding zoning districts include MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, C2, General Commercial District, AC Agricultural, and AR Agricultural Residential. Some of the surrounding land use. Some of the surrounding zoning districts include MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, C2, General Commercial District, AC Agricultural, and AR Agricultural Residential. Some of the surrounding land uses include RES 1 to the north, ROR, Retail Office Residential to the north. Village Mixed Use to the east and to the south. Oops, I'm sorry, to the west and to the south. And east is AGR, Agricultural Rural, to the east. This slide gives you a better idea of the surrounding area. As you can see, the town of St. Leo is abutting the northwest portion of the subject properties and is surrounded by the villages of Pasadena Hills Special Area Plan. The concentric circle shown here, kind of in a dark blue, depicts the village center of Village A at the intersection of Clinton Avenue Extension and Prospect Road. It is important to note that the proposed project is not within the villages of Pasadena Special Area Plan, only surrounded by it. Again, the project goes, is proposing to go from RES 1 to PD on an undeveloped and vacant piece of property with the exception of a barn. This map shows the existing future land use of RES 1. And this one shows the proposed PD flu. As previously mentioned, the proposed PD flu has associated subarea policies. The policies require that any rezoning amendments within the subject properties are required to go through an MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development process. The subarea policies also discuss the minimization of visual intrusion of future development through the utilization of existing vegetation as landscaping. It also encourages a development transition away from Clinton Avenue Extension and Prospect Road as it goes towards the town of St. Leo to the west. And it also provides a bike and pedestrian connectivity to existing and planned trails. This table shows the maximum square feet in dwelling units allowed on the properties. 340,000 square feet for retail commercial, 60,000 square feet for office, and 900 dwelling unit max for residential. Again, the project is not within the villages of Pasadena Hills, but Village A is to the east. And it establishes a village, establishes a village center at the intersection of Clinton Avenue and Prospect Road that is planned for higher density and at the center and diminishes as it gets closer to the town and outwards. With the maximum 900 dwelling units, that would result in a density of 5.06 dwelling units per acre, which is appropriate given the surrounding village densities that can allow between four to 10 dwelling units per acre. There's also an associated MPUD going to be heard today that addresses the site more specifically. This slide reiterates, reiterates what I previously mentioned on the other slide with the dark blue depicting, the dark blue circle depicting the village center A. This shows the same using the villages Pasadena Hills map. And the transportation needs assessment showed that the study area would operate at an acceptable level of service with the proposed development. And with that, Planning and Development recommends that the LPA find the amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommends approval to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, the applicant's present. You want to speak now, Ms. Applicant, or you want to rebut? I know you requested extra time, so.
We can do it anyway. We have one presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, just to talk about both the comp plan and the MPUD. So, we don't, we didn't want to be repetitive, so we have one PowerPoint presentation to be presented by Matt.
Okay.
I know the town is here, if you want to hear from the town, and then we can present and be able to explain in our presentation. And a rebut, that's fine, too.
Whatever you think best, fine.
Go forward and let the town speak, and then we'll give our presentation and incorporate our rebuttal in that.
Okay, great, thank you, Barbara. Okay, who is here to speak for the city? You state your name and address, please.
Richard Christmas, 12834 Christmas Drive, St. Leo.
And you've been sworn, right?
I'm mayor of the town.
They say you've been sworn.
Excuse me?
You have been sworn, right?
I have been sworn, thank you. So, pardon me, we typically don't come to the county's planning meetings, so bear with me if you would. Our first discussion with the applicant occurred around December 2018 at town meeting. And at that time, the town said we had concerns about the density and the transition zone between this development as well into the town. Based on our concerns, we sent a letter to the Planning Commission, to the chairman of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission themselves, outlining our concerns. And that letter's probably in y'all's packet, and I'm not going to go through it because it would be repeating what you already know. After that letter, we had a meeting with the county staff, as well as with the developer down in Newport Ritchie. And what we learned at that meeting was, in spite of our concerns about the density of the property, we learned a lot of things. But one of the things we learned was, in spite of the density of that property, at that time, when they came to the town, it was 600 units. And then it was up by 150% to 900 units on the 170 acres. And that was based on a recommendation from the county staff. So, I presented another concern for the town. Following that meeting, we had a meeting at, you know, in the town's St. Leo, we had our monthly meeting. The developer came, we discussed our, our previous meeting with them at that meeting. And then we then submitted a second letter outlining our concerns to the chairman of the, of the County Board of County Commissioners, reiterating those issues. So, the town is okay with the current zoning. The current zoning is compatible with the development that is across the street, across State Road 52, which is Lake Javita. One dwelling unit per gross acre. That's what the zoning is right now, we're perfectly fine with that. It also matches up perfectly with the zoning that the, that's the closest piece of property that touches this, this development parcel. It's also one unit per acre. So, the town is fine with that. We, we also understand property owners' rights, landowners' rights. What is being proposed is going beyond what their current rights are to something way more dense. And when I saw the graphic just a minute ago, and I just did the math in my head, I see that 900 units on 170 acres comes out to something like a little over five unit per acre. But then when you throw in the equivalent of three and a half Home Depots and 60,000 square feet of office space, now you're going way more dense than, than, you know, even if you were to say you're putting five units per acre, because you got to squeeze in, you know, the equivalent of three Home Depots and, and 60,000 square feet of office space, and then these houses. So, with that, the town requests denial of the proposed comprehensive plan change. That's the end of my comments for the comprehensive plan.
Sure, go ahead, David.
So, did the town object when the villages of Pasadena Hills was created?
Yes.
He showed up at the public hearings and objected to the villages of Pasadena Hills?
I'm sure we went to the meeting at the Don Macbeth Activity Center and raised concerns there. And whether or not we sent out a specific letter after that, I couldn't speak to that.
So, did, like, did you show up at any county meeting? County, public, county meetings like this, like a planning commission, board of county commissioners, oppose to the villages of Pasadena Hills?
I couldn't speak to that. I did not personally show up and notice, but I, there was a period of time that I was not on the town commission.
Do you know if the town sent anybody to oppose the villages of Pasadena Hills?
I still can't speak to that either.
Because the reason I'm asking is because, are you aware of the fact that this property almost was in the villages of Pasadena Hills?
Well, I am aware of that, yes.
Okay, so if it had been in the villages.
But almost was and is, it's not the same exact thing, right?
I understand that, but it got removed literally the day of the last, had you been there, you would know that it was removed literally the day of the final public hearing of Pasadena Hills. It was, it was in all the way up until that day, and they elected to be pulled out of it at the very last minute. But my question is, if it had been in the villages of Pasadena Hills, would you still be objecting?
So, you want me to give an opinion on something that happened in the past that I wasn't there?
Well, it still could happen. They could annex it to the, they could say, we want to now.
The easy answer for me is to say, yes, we would object it, object it, right? Because there's no way to prove or disprove that.
Well, I'm asking, is, if they just decided to join the villages of Pasadena Hills, would you still object?
We would have objection to any kind of density like this on the town border, yes.
Okay, it is interesting to me that nobody from the town was there when we were approving the villages of Pasadena Hills, including when we were trying to decide whether to include this property in or out of it. The town wasn't there at all. And I was there, I'm just telling you, from personal memory, there was a big debate at the board of county commissioners about whether this property should or should not be in the villages of Pasadena Hills. The town did not weigh in one way or the other. And if, I'm bringing this up because had, but for the property owner decided at the last minute to pull themselves out, they would be in Pasadena Hills, and one could argue that they would be entitled to the density that they're seeking today.
Right, and we would not be here right now. But we are here now addressing this.
Okay.
Not that, we're talking about this specifically, right? Which is not part of, I heard is not part of Pasadena Hills, is that, is that a correct statement?
It's not in there today, but my, my question for you is, if this was so egregious for this to happen, where was the town with the day we were deciding whether to keep it in Pasadena Hills or not? Where were you all?
You were also where this property owner came to us to annex into the town when they were trying to work with the, with the, deal with the county. And there was also the lawsuit over the landfill going on at the same time.
I'm aware of all that, but I'm aware of all that, but I don't understand how that's relevant to the level of density that's allowed in this project.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Mayor, did the applicant request annexation?
The current applicant did not.
They did not?
And has not.
Prior owners?
Prior to this applicant, this, their, this, this owner, from my understanding, did, I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's the same person. I actually don't see who owns the property, but that piece of property was, you know, they came to us asking us if we would annex them in and strung us along for a period of time.
And what did the city decide, or the town decide to do with the annexation request?
We decided that we were going to wait for them to bring us a formal proposal.
So, they never actually requested annexation?
That's correct. They did not come into the meeting and, and do it formally through the meeting. It was all like discussions with, with the planner and with the, with the attorney and, and with the mayor at the time.
Anybody else?
Right.
All right, anything else?
No, that's all I want.
Okay, have anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward. Give us your name and address. Look forward to hearing from you.
Arnold Kerrington, 12206 Shakespeare Trail, St. Leo, 33574. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for listening to our petitions concerning the Grand Oaks development. I would like to talk about the proposed density. According to the advertised information, there would be 900 homes and 400 square feet of commercial space and office space placed on 178 acres. This amounts to .14 acre per lot, or about seven houses per acre, according to my calculations. Taking a .14 acre lot, place in a house, plus a driveway, plus a swimming pool or patio, I question where there would be room for a grand oak. As a comparison to our neighbor to the north, the Lake Javita development encompasses 1,054 acres and currently has 696 homes. Fully built out, it'll have 871 homes. This is fewer homes than the Grand Oak, Grand Oaks proposals, even though the land mass is about six times larger. Lake Javita has many rolling hills and lakes. The Grand Oaks project will occur in only one hillside. I attended the April 8th County Commission meeting where the proposal to change the zoning was introduced. At that meeting, the commission recognized a water conservation group and declared April as Florida Water Conservation Month. We are thankful for such groups working to preserve our valuable resources. Good conservation is bolstered by good planning. And here's an opportunity for you, our appointed officials, to control the density of the planned development and make a real difference in conservation, as well to the quality of life of our residents, both current and in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Any other speakers? Barbara?
Barbara Willhite, for the record. Matt Armstrong has a presentation that I think will address those questions. The 600, 900 issue, so not to get confused, the zoning is for 600. Our request was for 600. When we were working with the planning staff, they thought that there in the future someday may be more demand for additional apartments because it's so close to the university. And so, they asked us to add into the comp plan 300 additional units to the 900. We are zoning 600. If someday there's a demand for more, we have to go back through this process with a public hearing to have 900. So, our presentation and the numbers and the density is based upon what we're actually zoning it for. So, I just wanted to give that preface because I know that, I don't, we've got a lot of numbers thrown at you now, so. With that, I'll let Matt do, do his thing.
Good afternoon, Matt Armstrong, for the applicant. 855-28 St. South in St. Petersburg is 33712. I'm going to try to set the stage here, the context a little bit of where this is at. I, I was part of the villages of Pasadena Hills plan many, many years ago, so I remember that. I remember a lot of the things we talked about back then and, and density and where it goes and where it's, where to put it was a big part of that conversation. And trying to respect the area out there. In fact, that whole villages of Pasadena Hills plan had its origin in, in trying not to mess things up out there because of the hills, because of the scenery, and try to keep these things clustered as much as we can. So, density in the right place, in the right way, can be a good thing because it does conserve the land as opposed to just spreading out all over the place without any kind of respect for, for what's there. This is the southwest corner, or the project, rather, is in the southwest corner. So, if you're standing here, you're looking southwest, across to that hillside and, and up the, up the, up the slope to the top. So, you know, what, where, why, and how? I mean, as far as y'all know, here's 75, and, and existing State Road 52 comes along and goes up towards St. Leo, this, this direction. The new 52 alignment will come across through Marada. And you've got Connected City over here, Marada's here. And then it comes across and goes through the subject property right about here. It connects to Clinton Avenue, and then it heads on over to Fort King and then, and then 301 and over to US 98. So, it's rolling right through there. That construction is supposed to start as early as this year. So, we're, we're looking at context. This is everything that's going on around here. We've got the Connected City, there you see it in the blue color, right there, right off of 75, the new interchange there. There's an area established in the comp plan called Gateway Hub. The idea here was to have some of the light industrial and employment generating uses here. Same thing right on the other side with one Pasco Center, some of the industrial projects here. There's even some spec industrial stuff coming in up here that I've heard about. And then, of course, you've got St. Leo University tucked in here, Lake Javita, and then VOPH, and then you're over to Dade City. So, we're right in the middle of all of this, and it's been a long time in the planning to get to this point. So, we're, we're looking at completing this plan and really following through on what's been established and what's been set up. Not trying to change course at this point. We look at the southeast corner of Prospect and Clinton that was rezoned just in March 2018, 34 developable acres. It's much smaller, 207 residential units. This project that I'm talking about is, is right over here. So, part of villages of Pasadena Hills, right on the east side of Prospect. That, that rezoning just went through the MPUD here. We've got 6.6 units an acre, 150,000 square feet of commercials, 60,000 square feet of office. We're, we're coming in at less than that. Again, the idea was to step down. VOPH has a lot in it. We're not, we're not in it, as has been clearly stated. So, the idea was to step down from that, to say, okay, we're not going to bring that same density right up to the town's edge. We're going to step that down, we're going to transition down, we're going to respect the fact that the town doesn't want. the fact that the town doesn't want as much density as what VOPH was, was presenting. Here's what the zoning map looks like. So subject property outlined here, got the orange, the line of, of oranges is the, is the subject for the MPUD. This spot right here, that's where we abut, the town right now, the gentleman that was speaking earlier in Shakespeare Lane, this neighborhood here, so it's a beautiful little neighborhood, these are one acre lots in here, the town halls in, in this general area. The project, the MPUD project butts up to the town right, right around here. Here's Prospect Road, there's existing C two, existing C two on the other side, the MPUD for Lake Javita. This is the MPUD that came through recently, part of VOPH in eight, in twenty eighteen. There's another MPUD right over here that's also part of VOPH that, that does butt up to the town limit. So we've had a few MPUDs that have come through, similar to, to ours, that are adjacent to the town limit, fairly recently, and, and they went through as part of VOPH. I think it's important to note here, too, this white dotted line, that's actually the applicant's property as well. So they own this piece, they, they own the piece that is the subject of the MPUD rezoning as well. So we've worked with county staff to set up some conditions of approval that, that try to strengthen and add to the buffers, to be a little bit more than what your standard buffer would be under the Land Development Code. We've even looked at what it would be to buffer some of this, to, to your own, to our property. But this, this piece is not part of the MPUD right now, just the stuff towards Prospect Road.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes, sir.
While you're on it. Matt, what, is that, what is that property that's in the town currently zoned as?
In, in the town, I think it's similar to what you've got here on, on Shakespeare Lane, which I believe, and Mayor Christmas or town planner could probably state this better than I can, that it's a similar zoning to this, probably a one unit per acre residential type of zoning. Lower density, certainly the town has been very clear in what their, their own vision and their own comp plan is, which is to keep that rural character, respect the rural character of the area, despite the fact that the university's across the street. The town has tried to keep that, that same rural feeling to it, as a lower density. So their own comp plan does speak to that. The county's comp plan in this area is, is a little bit different in terms of vision. So it, it's been a long, a long story of where these two things come together. As we talked about the property on the north side of existing fifty-two's C two, we've got C two on, on our property, Lake Javita's there in the northwest, the university there up on the top of the hill, is, is there, has been there for, for a long time, pretty intense uses there. We talked about market demand, too, for this area. It's, it's changing, it's always a balancing act as, as to what you do when you need something. And there's, there's little to existing off-campus apartments right now for the university. And they handle a lot of it on, on campus. My wife works for them, she's, she went to college there many years ago, and housing's always been an interesting issue with, with them. But they are nice dorms. But there's probably a need in the future as the university grows in this area for something like that. You've got the new fifty-two coming through, and there, there will be significant traffic volumes. In fact, when Steve Henry was looking at this and working with the county and FDOT, there was a lot of volume coming out on the Prospect Road, even, even coming off the new fifty-two, the amount of left turns off the new fifty-two on the Prospect going back up to what will become County Road, County Road fifty-two. There'll be a lot of traffic in this area. Likely, likely a good market for, for things to develop there. We're residential to residential, that's, that's compatible. This master plan only allows single-family adjacent to the town, so we set up conditions in the MPUD that say, okay, when you're up against the town, it's only single-family residential. You can't have apartments there, you can't have multifamily there, there can't be townhouses there, single-family detached next to the town. We've written the conditions to say the larger single-family lot sizes would be adjacent to those existing one acre lots in the town.
How big?
And, what's that?
How big?
How big? We, we've, they're probably, you know, the, the, what'd we say, sixties? Sixty feet wide? Sixty foot wide lots, probably by one twenty and ten. That's, that's what's specked out on the MPUD right now. Of course, with the buffers, the significantly enhanced buffers over and above what we would typically be required to do in the code. So we've tried to buffer that more than we normally would do. And here we're talking about those greater buffers than, than what's in the code already. Construction of the multi-use path, so that was something the town requested, which is a good idea, to connect what will be built on current Road fifty, State Road fifty-two, back to the university, to tie that in along Prospect to the new multi-use trail that's, that's on the new State Road fifty-two, so that that pedestrian access is present, and people can get to where they need to go without having to have a car. And with that, that's, that's my, my piece, I'm open for questions if you have any.
Okay, any questions for Matt? Anybody from up here?
I have two things to add to that, please. One is that I was interested in Mr. Goldstein's questioning about the town and their participation, because in twenty-ten, Village, Parcel C one and Village C came forward, direct, directly adjacent to the town, and were rezoned for a hundred and sixty-five single-family homes on forty-six developable acres, which is three point five units per acre. So we're at three point three units per acre developable acre, that was three point five along their boundary. So we, we have a consistent plan here, the county is being consistent in their planning. The other thing that I find interesting when somebody stands and says rez one, rez one, rez one, is that the comp plan frowns on rez one. You can't get a rez one land use density, because that is the definition of sprawl. It's an inefficient land use pattern. And if you look at a lot of the larger lot projects, what do you see? You see no drainage, no sidewalks, no street lighting, you know, no parks. Somebody taught me once, a really good planner named Francis Channel Marina, that density is not your enemy. If, if the roads can accommodate, is the plan and it's planned for, it's not your enemy, because it allows those things as master drainage, streetlights, parks, sidewalks. In this case, it's providing for the ability to have a multi-use trail for the students to get to State Road fifty-two extension. So with that, we worked hard with staff on this project, we're proud of this project, we think it'll be a very good project and a good fit, and we'd ask for your recommendation to the B O C C of approval.
All right, any questions for Barbara? Any motion from somebody?
To be clear, you have two different items before you on this project, you have a land use amendment and you have a rezoning, so you need to take them up separately in your voting.
Okay, so...
And technically, I realize everybody spoke, but I would vote on the land use amendment first, I just confirm nobody else wants to speak to the zoning before you take action on that.
Okay.
So you're saying item P fourteen nineteen dash zero nine six four?
Yes.
Yes, you need to take action on P fourteen first.
Right, so I'll move approval of P fourteen.
You have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
So does staff want to do a presentation on P fifteen now?
Good afternoon, Chairman Gray and members of the commission, my name is Gus Karpis, current planning. So we are here to speak a little bit more about Grand Oaks. P fifteen R Z seven three five one, rezoning for zoning amendment for Grand Oaks, MPUD, master planned unit development, rezoning request from A C Agriculture, A one agriculture residential, and C two general commercial zoning districts to an MPUD, master planned unit development, to allow a mixed use development on approximately a hundred and seventy-seven acres, on a hundred and seventy-seven acres. As you see, you've seen some of these slides already with Viviana, the property is located on the southwest corner of State Road fifty-two and Prospect Road intersection. The current, again, I'm trying to see the slide there, the current zoning districts there are, again, A C, A R, and C two, they're, again, looking to make that an MPUD zoning. The current, or future land use for the property is rez one, you have made a motion to amend that and approve that motion. And then we're looking at a slide here that shows the county-defined rural areas, this property is not located in that area. Here, you're showing that Village A and that commercial area, that central market area in relation to the property. You also see the town of St. Leo is to the northwest of the subject property, you also have Village A to the east, and Village C of the villages of Pasadena Hill, around the subject property along with the Clinton Avenue extension, which is going to bisect this property. Attached is the master plan with the conceptual access points. Okay, so the request specifically, as I think Barbara did state, is the, the rezoning from the agriculture, agricultural residential, and general commercial to an MPUD master planned development allowing six hundred single-family detached villas, townhomes, and multifamily units. Also, three hundred, three hundred and forty-eight thousand square foot of commercial development, and sixty thousand square foot of office development on a hundred and seventy-seven acres. They were seeking the Correspondent Camp, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which you just discussed and recommended for approval. The proposed main access to this property is off of Prospect Road, south of the intersection of the existing State Road fifty-two, which is an existing signal, signalized intersection. You did see this also with Viviana's slide, the existing zoning and the existing uses on the property, so I don't know if you'd like me to go through them again. The proposed development is located in the central market area and outside the urban service area and rural area. The proposed request is consistent with the Pasco County Land Development Code, Chapter four hundred, subsection four oh two point two, zoning amendment, master planned unit development, and with the applicable provisions of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan. The Planning and Development Department recommends approval based on the following criteria. The proposal does step down the density and creates appropriate transition between the higher densities of the villages of Pasadena Hills to the town of St. Leo. The proposed development will be beneficial, we feel, to the town of St. Leo and St. Leo University by providing both needed residential options and non-residential services for the students near campus, and by providing entitlements outside the borders of the town of St. Leo, by providing entitlements outside the borders of town of St. Leo, allowing the town to meet the service needs of their students, faculty, and residents while maintaining the integrity of their own comprehensive plan goals by, of providing a rural feel within the town borders. That is what I have. If there's any questions, thank you for listening.
Okay. Any questions up here? All right.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Maybe this is just a clarification thing for me, but when I look at the approval, the conditions of approval, there's, there's a couple of different dimensional standards for single-family residential. When I look at the MPUD master plan, there's only one.
Okay.
Can somebody clarify where, I mean, I know it says when it, when it abuts, or I think it says abuts or adjacent, I'm trying to remember problems here pulling it up, but...
Sure. Barbara Willhite, so the master plan always sets forth a typical lot tail that's the detail that's the minimum, but we have a condition for the lots adjacent to the existing residential lots in the town that provide for a larger, larger dimensional standards. So that's in, on page ten.
Is staff going to know how to interpret that? Or there's, I mean, I'm trying to, is it clear enough for whenever you go in for a site plan?
We'll make a notation before the board meeting to tie our condition together, we can do that.
Okay. Very good, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, any objections? Yes, sir?
Well, Mr. Chair, before you take the objection, just, because technically, the applicant, we get to speak again unless she's willing to waive that.
She can rebut, yeah.
Well, I know, but she's allowed to make initial presentation in the MPUD, I just want to make sure she's okay.
We're, we're going to defer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you keep me straight there.
No problem.
Yes.
Richard Christmas, one two eight three four, Christmas Drive, St. Leo. I'd like to reiterate my concerns that I had when we talked about the Comprehensive Plan Change. You know, I want to be clear, the town is not saying no to development, just that the development next to the town needs to be compatible with the town, sensitive to the topography, and is not an eyesore that's in the view, that would be something similar to what you might see if you were driving down State Road fifty and you were going to Claremont, and you look at a bunch of houses where the orange trees used to be, and I think that the county did that when they were developed in the rural view corridor. I believe some people went over there and took a look at that, and they said, well, we don't want that over here. Well, this is the first opportunity for the county to look at the first hills when you're coming east on State Road fifty-two, is the hills of St. Leo and San Antonio. So we had, at our last meeting, we had the president of St. Leo University, Dr. Sinise, and he gave us the long-range plan for the university, and a discussion about how he is going to, wishes to expand the west campus. And the west campus is going to include more dormitories. At no point did he talk about there was a need for what this development is going to bring. He did not say that they needed more apartment, off-campus housing. He didn't say anything like that. He was happy with having students on campus, he's happy with the, with the camaraderie and the, and the, and the kind of life college experience that those folks experienced. There was no talk that, well, I wish there was more housing for these people to have So with that, rather than going through everything I went in through before, I also the town requests that the zoning change is denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas.
Drive, Lutz, Florida, three three five five eight. You know, the one thing that hasn't been mentioned, and didn't show up on any of the maps that the county staff presents you or the developer presents you, is the topography of this property. And it's that topography that makes, the mayor hinted at it, but it's what makes this a unique property, as well as St. Leo, a unique town in Pasco County. And one of the town's greatest concerns was how this development would appear, because the town's Comprehensive Plan values view corridors very highly, and emphasizes that they should be preserved as much as possible to maintain that rural character and that rural feel to the town. Because this development sits on top of a hill that's to the east of the town, we did some analysis through GIS and CAD and produced the graphic that you see up on the screen now, that shows you a point on the property, the Grand Oaks property, that would be twenty feet above the ground, and we've assumed, you know, a one-story structure, rather than saying it would be the full two stories, and where that would be visible from within the town. And what you can see is everything in green there, the development on the Grand Oaks property would be visible from the town. We did this for a number of points, and almost in every instance, we found that most of the town would be able to see the development of Grand Oaks. And again, the mayor brought up the point about Claremont, because this is really the first instance where Pasco County is faced with this challenge, as to how to deal with hillside development and the visual impacts that it has, not only on people driving through St. Leo, but every day on the people that live in St. Leo. So with this said, and I want to turn you back to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment you just approved, one of the policies in that Plan Amendment was to minimize any visual intrusion of development and respect scenic view sheds. And yet the sixty-two conditions that are attached to this planned development zoning don't include any to deal with this issue. include any to deal with this issue. We think that there are ways to deal with this, rather than just assuming that existing trees, which will probably all be cut down for this development, will provide that kind of visual barrier to make these houses more, less visible to the Town of St. Leo. And the town had great foresight in this. Back when their land development code was developed, they looked at codes around the country. They found one in California, a town that had a lot of hillside development, and they put into our land development code pictures of how hillside development should work. And we've gone back to that now and we've taken a couple of sections of that. We'd be happy to share that with county staff, but we think there are ways beyond just stating in the Plan Amendment that visual protection of view sheds should be provided. We think that there are conditions that should be added to the planned development to ensure this to the town. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Would you like to receive and file if we were...
Okay, we have a motion? Move the receiving file, sorry.
Second.
Motion to receive and file in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone else? From the town? All right, then. Matt or Barbara? Like to speak to the visual impact, please.
Yeah, Matt Armstrong, again, for the applicant. I very much appreciate this exercise and effort. You know, I myself, I grew up in Colorado. We dealt with this a lot. What can you see from where, trying to protect the hillside? Claremont was always a big issue, and as Mr. Ashburn stated, the county has tried to deal with that as much as possible out in the northeast, where we've got a lot of topography. It's tough, because to some extent, you say, "Okay, well, what can you put on top? And what does it look like?" The university itself is up on top of the hill. Granted, it's been there for a long time and the buildings are very beautiful, and I think everybody generally likes it to be there. But it gets a little bit challenging at a point like this to say, "Well, what is it, what is it that goes up there and how does it look?" And all those types of things. I think at a zoning level, the idea of clustering things together as much as you can, where it's not just completely spread out, if you cluster it, you can buffer it and you can try to minimize the overall impact, because you've contained it into one spot as opposed to letting it spread out like Claremont. Because as Mr. Ashburn stated, that's not something I don't think anybody wants to have happen here. So, with that, I respect what they've done here and I...
What's the policy, Matt? And you probably know this as well as anybody, is in terms of clearing the hillside. I mean, there's beautiful trees on that property. What's the plan there?
Well, as far as the trees go, that would default to the tree ordinance that protects it. It protects it the same as it does if it's on a flat site or if it's on a slope.
So, I see some developers going in and just...
Yeah, and...
Flattening the trees.
Yeah, and the trees...
I hate to see that.
Yeah, and, you know, we can't tell from this picture, but some of the other aerials that we had there, most of that site doesn't have trees on it. There's a couple of spots where some grand oaks would be there and the tree ordinance would kick in. A lot of it, I think, was cleared probably a long time ago for grazing.
Yeah, a lot of it's pasture, but there are some nice, really nice oaks on there.
There are, there are, and I think that's...
And I assume there'd be some special effort made to maintain those.
Yeah, and, yeah, through site planning and meeting the code requirements for, at the point of a preliminary site plan.
Yeah, I would just add that the trees and talking about view sheds, the trees are within the town on the Order Benetton's property, in between our property and State Road 52. We are not adjacent to State Road 52 where we're high, we're adjacent to State Road 52 where we're low. So, it's, the town has significant trees in between our property and the town and State Road 52, as well as a significant Category 1 wetland system, which won't be able to be cut down. So, they do have that within their jurisdiction.
Yeah, I'd just say from, you know, I know what you're talking about, about Claremont, because it looks pretty hideous, but, you know, that was all orange grove. These are big oaks. These are things that are going to hide the housing, and as long as they're not cleared, I don't think you're going to have the same effect, in my personal opinion. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I think it's really a little bit of apples and oranges. Excuse my pun, but it's a, I don't think it's going to have the same effect as what you have over there, because they went and just wiped out all the orange groves and put houses where the oranges were. So, I just share that for my, you know, my colleagues up here, and I'd like to hear their comments. Anything, anybody?
Well, I'm not sure if you're referring to me as one of your colleagues, but I'm going to make some comments with...
Of course, always, David.
But please keep in mind, though, that the state's about to build a major road right through this property, so there's going to be some trees taken down for that road. I don't want anybody to think that, regardless of what they do from a development standpoint...
Those are going to happen, yeah.
There's going to be some impact because of the roads coming through. So, it's not going to be a pristine hill regardless of what they do.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval. We have a second?
A second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay.
One more? Denise, should we have one more? Yeah. I knew we'd get you up here sooner or later.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Will Poon, PE, Plan and Development. I'd like to inform the Planning Commission also that I submitted to the Clerk of Court the Separté forms earlier for members Kevin Wyman, Michael Cox, Jamie Girardi and Charles Gray. I'm here to represent the Conditional Use Amendment Request, item P-16, PDD 19-0963, Angelo's Aggregate Materials Limited and Stony Point Limited Partnership are the applicants. As mentioned earlier, Conditional Use 19-26, Conditional Use Amendment Request for Angelo's Aggregate Materials. Location of the project is the northwest corner of Enterprise Road and Alton Road, extending north to Duck Lake Canal Road. The applicant's requesting to amend its conditional use for the facility, expand the footprint of the mining and landing filling within the existing project boundaries, approximately 45 acres in the northeast corner of the property, and those proposed changes to the overall project grounding or the day-to-day operations. And here's the zoning map. The existing zoning is MPUD and agricultural and residential. Same thing with the future land use, adjacent to agriculture, planned development. Finding of facts, the subject parcel is the Enterprise Road Recycling Solid Waste Facility, which is operating as a Class 1 mine, Class 3 landfill. Access to the site is from Enterprise Road, county maintained, 30-foot right-of-way with 24-foot wide pavement. It's within flood zone X and A, conforming to and complying with all land development codes under Section 1104 flood damage prevention. The owner is submitting a Conditional Use Amendment Request to expand the footprint of the facility within the existing boundary, 45 acres in the northeast corner. No changes to the overall project and day-to-day operations, and all previous conditions remain in effect. And here's a site plan, grading plan of the proposed improvements, northeast corner, represented by a triangular shaded area. And it's mentioned previous amendments. All the conditions still apply and in effect, including the landscape plan, which is shown here, as previously approved from before, and the northeast corner, 45 acres, is located there in the landscape plan. And these are some of the previously conditions required, landscape requirements from before. So, the recommendation by the Planning and Development Department, it recommends approval with conditions.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, so all the conditions that were and previously put into place, are they now being adhered to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport, Florida 34652, for the applicant. We had our conditional use that you all heard probably in November was approved by the board in December. Kind of give you a history of where we were and where we are now. It was approved by the board in December. After it left Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, you recall that what we were seeking was an increase in capacity by increasing the height and from, to go to 320 NVGD or NAVD, whatever that might be. After we left you all on your recommendation of approval, the Commissioner Oakley held a town hall meeting and with residents, and it was discussed the concept of lowering the height to 300 and then getting additional capacity by going into this corner that was just not footprint. The boundary has always been up to that corner. That corner actually is a chicken farm and the county cemetery landfill. It's within the project boundary. We're not expanding the acreage for this facility. So, we were able to gain back some of those, some capacity by going up into that corner that was decreased with that decrease in height. So, we had, we couldn't do it at the public hearing process, because we hadn't had that reviewed and didn't have that noticed, so we had to come back and modify again. So, we stand here today. The other thing that's fast forward, after we left you, went to the board, we really did keep tightening down on those landscape berm conditions and the, we all ended up having a very short trigger to start those, permit and start. And so, they have permitted and started construction of the berm. So, that has been successful in our efforts, our joint efforts, to make sure we had conditions that were clear and specific, and that landscape berm is underway and on target. We're reporting monthly to the county. One of our conditions was to report monthly and to tell a progress report, so the county doesn't have to have the burden of coming out and checking every month, where are we at, where are we at. We were self-reporting that, so they can read it, and if they have any questions, of course, come out for a site visit or call, but there haven't been any concerns. So, that's where we're at, and we appreciate staff's review of it. Hopefully, we won't be back for a very long time, but we appreciate your consideration and recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. And Matt. Is anyone here to add concerns or ask questions? I don't see anyone. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve, as submitted. Any other second?
A second.
And a second. You have a motion to approve and a second? Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, Will.
Mr. Chair?
Motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second? Come on, Mike, you gotta be quicker. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll tell the press I kept it up. That's right.
You did the heavy lifting thing.